All right, thank you.
Recording in progress.
I would like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for June 7th at 12:03 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shank, present.
Chad Sexton Duranian, present.
Veronica Cowell, present. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being taped recorded and it is also being on broadcast on channel now. So if you, just so you know that, chairman's additions or deletions. The only thing I would add is that under town administration updates and reports, anything financial can be brought up during that and as well as anything having to do with policies or procedures that have come forward under communications. So that's it for today. Our, moving down to 5.1, Towns and Administration Updates and Reports. The purpose of today's meeting is to review FY21 job postings as well as FY22 postings to make sure that we know what we're going forward with for postings for this year. So that said, Joe and Chaz, do you have anything else to add? All right, so I just wanted to review current job postings. So I'm going to go to the website right now. And Chad and I are both in Town Hall, by the way, so it makes it a little difficult for sharing, screen sharing if we need to. But if you go to the town website under jobs and volunteering, and I was going to look first at positions that are open, that are paid positions.
So Madam Chair, you guys are going to be able to see it. I won't be able to see it on my screen because I'm on my computer, on my iPad, so.
Okay, I'm afraid that if I, I don't have a good way to screen share. I could pull up Zoom online, but we could wind up with feedback.
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out hardly. If Veronica locks in under Zoom, we would be having feedback. What could we do to prevent that?
I could go in.
I can use my.
Let's just talk through it, Joe. All right, is that okay?
Yeah, I'm good. Why don't you just, you know, keep me in, I'll be all right.
All right, I'm going to report on the outcome of our meeting with DOR tomorrow in our regular meeting, but I will say that we need a posting for an interim accountant. So that is what I see as the first thing. So on the website, I'm going to go to the town accountant posting to see what's up there. So right now, we have a posting for a town accountant and really it's an interim accountant that we're looking for for the time being. Permanent accountant, we will post closer to FY22, which would be July 1st. So Town of Townsend Employment Opportunity Town Accountant is what we have. The Town of Townsend has a vacancy for the position of Town Accountant. The position is appointed by and takes policy direction from the Board of Selection, Selectmen, and under day-to-day administrative direction, the Town Administrator. Position is 40 hours per week and is a contractual position. So what I would like to do is repost this as an interim appointment. So Chaz and Joe, thoughts on that?
All right, well, I guess my question would be, doing the interim, I get it, but I mean, are we looking for a full-time, aren't we?
We are, but what I would like to do, just to get someone in here quickly for the next month, is a short-term posting for an interim town accountant.
I got you. All right, I apologize. Thank you.
And then we will keep the posting for the accountant, but repost on July 1st or August 1st. This case may be probably July 1st for August.
Right, so the current vacancy that is posted, we would need to repost, just adding interim on that particular job posting. Then on July 1st, take the interim off and repost the same, the same one.
Correct.
I'm okay with that.
Okay with that.
Right, so is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I made a motion to repost the accountant position as an interim accountant position as soon as we can post it.
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. Thank you. All right, so going back, what we don't have posted is for an interim town administrator. So I would like to create a posting for that. And for now, it would be just for an interim, probably for the next six months or so, until we get everything, you know, back to normal working day-to-day. So a posting for an interim TA, what I was thinking is I would pull something from the MMA website for now and create our own with the position being subject to the selection policies and procedures and the current town charter, because our town charter is also, we voted a town meeting to accept the changes to the town charter. So I would like to hold off on hiring a permanent town administrator, even posting for it until we hear back on that. And that could be a while, couldn't it?
My thoughts are that with the charter, the new charter, that hasn't been approved from the state yet, but the assumption is it will get approved. Does state that we have a selection committee or a screening committee. I would like to also, in tandem with this, to also post for a screening committee for the interim, because I would like to have other input in that.
I was, all right, so this was from the meeting I was just in. Zach Blake, who is the Bureau Chief for DOR DLS, has contacted the Collins Center. I was told that For and Adam was in the meeting as well, that for the interim, we do not need a screening committee. For the, for the permanent, we do. And in order to get someone in here as quickly as possible, we might want to forego a screening committee. We want to talk about this tomorrow and it's on the agenda.
Well.
To give us time to think about it a little more overnight.
Madam Chair, I think, I mean, I, I think I understand where Chaz is going, but a screening committee absolutely for a new permanent employee, as far as trying to find an interim, I just think, you know, we can interview as a board and make a decision amongst ourselves to at least get somebody in there that we feel confident that will support, you know, the community and the needs of the town. That's my opinion. I mean.
How about if we table this till tomorrow? I don't know if that's the right word, but just set it aside until tomorrow and discuss that more. I guess my question is, is there a difference for an interim between the current charter and the new charter?
The reason why I'm bringing this up is because the interim is probably going to be here for about six months, eight months, maybe even longer. So I would like to at least get some kind of, I say, yes, we should post for the position as soon as possible. I don't have a problem with that, but I just, for the, I don't want any issues about us appointing, us being the Board of Selectmen, appointing somebody without feedback from other people. Feedback from other people.
And I get that, Chaz, but if it's an interim, you know, I highly recommend that we put together a very highly qualified and skilled committee to find the next TA for sure. So, but for our insanity reasons, I think we need to get a TA there to help us to do whatever we need. And I think people would truly understand that, yeah, we made a decision to bring an interim in, but it's nothing permanent. I mean, it just, it's an interim. I mean, I personally have a lot of questions I would like to be answered and we, as a committee and a board, our hands are tied because we have no one to go to, no one to talk to. So for me, I want to see somebody in that office that we can at least be able to get some kind of communications right.
All right, so I think what I'd like to do is hold off on making a decision on this until tomorrow's meeting. I want a little bit of time to consider. I know that it was recommended that we get someone in as soon as possible and that a screening committee for the interim, we may want to forego, but to Chaz's point, the interim could be here for six to eight months, if not longer. And so with that said, we might want a screening committee. So I'd like some time to look at both the current charter and the charter that was adopted at town meeting that hasn't been yet fully vetted by the state. So let's just hold off on this, but what I will do between now and tomorrow is come up with a posting that we can review. And I'll put that in the share point so that you can look at it for tomorrow and we can discuss then.
I'm okay with that.
Are you okay with that, Joe? Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm fine.
So, so let's hold off on that. And by tomorrow, I also heard that from Zach Blake with names and resumes. So, okay, so those were the first two that I wanted to look at. I'm looking at this, these postings here, Assistant Highway, I wanted to look at that. This posting went up about a month ago for a part-time, 10-hour-per-week department assistant for highway. This has, this position was not in place for the last fiscal year. We did fund it for this fiscal year. Let me just see if we can get the lights on. I don't know. It's a union position, so this would be, I don't even know if any, if anything has come into this. I haven't heard anything about it, but I, I think we should amend this to say as of FY22, July 1st, the start date. Because I know it's in the budget for FY22. I don't know that it is in the budget prior to that.
So are we looking for budget year 2022?
Yes. So starting date as of July 1st. Comments on that, Joe?
Oh, that's, that's fine. I mean, I think moving forward, some of these appointments, consider it for the 22, that's fine.
And realistically, that's probably when you would start anyway, given that it's already, you know, June 7th. All right, so the highway one stays on, this is 10 hours per week, part-time.
You motion for that?
Yeah, let's go with motions.
I make a motion to post for the position of Highway Department Assistant, starting July 1st.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
And yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, next one I would look at is the Conservation Agent. The vacancy for 15 hours per week, the union position. Again, I think we need to amend this as far as applications shall be submitted. So we can go through and amend the posting. It can be submitted to the Selectmen by email. And starting date, July 1st. So is there a motion?
Okay with that, Joe?
Yeah, I'm fine.
I make a motion to repost the job posting for Conservation Commission Agent to start July 1st.
Second.
Any further discussion on this?
The only question I have, I'm a little confused. So the applications are going to come to the email for the Selectmen? Is that where they're going? Is that what I just heard?
Yes, for now.
All right, and then we review one?
Review as soon as we get an interim TA and the interim TA would review.
Is I like, would be doing what, or?
I think the way I would do it is by liaisons.
Okay.
So if the, for all of these, they'll have to come into Selectmen. And so since we've been doing everything by liaison, let's do it by that. So it comes in for an entity that you are the liaison for, you take it, and then you can bring it to discuss in the meeting.
Yeah, that's good. That's fine.
All right. Do we need a separate motion for that? Can we just agree to that? Let's, let's move, let's, we have a motion on the floor for the Conservation Agent posting. Let's vote on that. So all those in favor of posting the Conservation Agent with the modification that applications are by email to selectmen@townsonma.gov, which is in there, we'll just remove the other. And with the position beginning July 1st. All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, so let's, is there a motion for how these will be, as these resumes, which I hope we get a lot of applications coming in, as they come into the Selectmen group, how do we handle them?
I make a motion that as resumes come in for these positions, the respective liaison will be the one handling the resumes before we go to the full board.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, there is not a posting for, so I'm looking at Conservation again. There isn't a posting for a Conservation Administrator. And I, I would want to post that position for 19 hours. We make it a part-time position. And again, to start July 1st. So, and by the way, I didn't mention this before, but postings for these should be on the bulletin board here in town, on the website, and also with MMA. So I don't know, we need a separate motion for that, but let's deal with the Conservation Administrator first, Administrative Assistant, because we did just have a resignation from that position a few weeks ago. So we would repost for 19 hours, part-time position to start July 1st. Is there a motion?
I move that we post for Conservation Administrative Assistant for 19 hours, starting July 1st.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, I'm looking through here. Kitchen Assistant. We did just hire for that, I believe. So we can take that one down from the website. And this might be a good point to have a motion that all of these will be posted on the bulletin board at Town Hall, on the town website, and also on the MMA website for all the postings that we're considering. So is there a motion for that?
I move that all the jobs discussed in this session will be posted on the bulletin board at Town Hall, on the town website, and MMA website.
Second.
Any further discussion? I guess for me, I would also, should we consider, like for Conservation, we could put that up on the Conservation website, the Organization for Conservation, same for anything that's planning board. If there is an organization that goes with the, the, so can we add to the motion for any support organization for the board?
amended.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And do we need a vote on the original motion? Vote on the original motion?
Joe Shank, yes.
Yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, thank you. All right, so we'll remove Kitchen Assistant. Let me go back here and look at this. Townsend PD Administrative Assistant, I believe this one just went up at the end of May and it is on the MMA website, so that will remain. All right, the other I wasn't as familiar with, Maintenance Technician. I'm not so sure we funded that position for the, we did not fund that position for fiscal year '22, so I believe we need to take that down from the website.
What is a maintenance? What, what's it, who's posted by?
Well, it, I think it's been up for a while now. Town of Townsend is seeking an energetic person for the position of laborer for the Facility Maintenance Department. So what we have under facilities, I'm looking at the FY22 budget, is we have the Maintenance Coordinator. And then the Maintenance Tech was approved for FY21, but it is zero for FY22. So we did not fund this position. So Maintenance Tech needs to come off the, Maintenance Tech needs to be removed.
So I guess I'm going to ask a question. So I know Rob has somebody that's working with him. Is that that position that we're talking about?
That is temporary help and that is funded.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to confirm that.
That one is funded, but the tech is not funded. All right. So we will move that one? Do we need a motion for that, or?
No, because we didn't find it, so it's not a position.
All right, so that one needs to be removed from the site. All right, looking again. Firefighter, paramedic, I think this is one that is always out there. This is 2020. Maybe we want to consult with Chief Boynton to see if this needs to be updated for FY22, because the date of this posting is January 3rd, 2020. So I guess, as the liaison, Joe, would you be comfortable? Do we need a motion for this?
Yeah, I think you make a motion so that he doesn't, or nobody thinks it just coming from me, that I'll just ask and then that will get a response from him.
All right, so is there a motion for Joe as the liaison to the, to the fire departments to consult with Chief Boynton to see if this needs updated and we can repost for July 2021 if needed?
That's for the paramedic per diem, right?
Doesn't say per diem.
It doesn't say per diem, for a full-time firefighter, paramedic position. So I know that we have appointed to that earlier in the year, so I don't know that this is still valid.
All right, no problem. Okay, motion made, I second.
Right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of Joe consulting with the fire chief on this and reposting as needed?
Sexton Duranian, yes.
Joe Shank, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, thank you. And let me go back to websites. The other one we have is Recycling Center Attendant 2. And again, I thought that we had hired on that. So I am the, no, I am not. You are the Board of Health. So could we have a motion for Chaz as the liaison to the Board of Health to check in with Carla to see if this has been filled? I believe it has, but, and to see what the status is of the posting and repost it needed for fiscal year 2020.
I think we did post it, but I do think they need one.
Okay, so a motion just to, a motion just to confirm?
So be it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. And I think that takes care of all of the positions that are up on the website currently. All right. I'm not going to go through board committee openings, or should we?
I'd like to dedicate some time to that, instead of just one month or on a new.
So do it maybe in the 15. All right, so we are doing appointments and reappointments this month. So what I could do is just for board and committee openings, we could all review this. So what I could do is just for board and committee openings, we could all review this. And I'll add it to the June fifteenth regular meeting, regular Tuesday evening meeting. To get this up to date. I know that, I'm looking at this, I believe that the, I don't know, it's up there. Open Space Recreation. So let's add to the June fifteenth meeting.
Let's, we, we're gonna do the eighth, the fifteenth, and then how we?
The eighth, fifteenth, and the twenty-ninth. We're skipping the week of Fourth of July, so like June seventh. And our next meeting after that is the thirteenth, or maybe it's June sixth. July sixth. We're skipping July sixth. We will have a meeting on July thirteenth and twentieth. Oh, we weren't gonna do the thirteenth, because we did the twenty-nine. We were doing the twenty-ninth in place of the thirteenth, and it would be June twentieth. Am I correct?
We still have the agendas.
All right, so we'll, we'll add to the June fifteenth meeting a review of the
If it pleases the board as well, if, if I can get that list beforehand, I'll add a I'll, I'll put a, a thing together so that we can attach it to the agenda, so that everybody knows exactly the position.
Yeah, we can just put solid, because I will be traveling. I just have to know what your guys' schedule's gonna be, so I'll work around that, I'll try.
All right, so I guess the, the other thing to look at as far as postings go are positions that beyond the ones that we just looked at, the new positions. We have a webmaster position open and a grant coordinator position. That's in the land use. And a grant administrator under land use, and a webmaster position under the Board of Selectmen. Do we want to consider postings for those at this point? Or do we want to put that off until July first?
I feel that we should put that off until July first. We've got a lot on our plate right now, and I think that with focusing on getting those positions, taking care of, really kind of takes precedence. That's my thought. What do you think, Joe?
Oh, I think, yeah, let's, let's try to concentrate on the incomes. I think that's more important, more than anything right now.
Yeah, to get the earnings in. New postings.
That way they can deal with that.
New postings for FY twenty-two, which would be webmaster, grant admin, and land use. Right. All right, so that pretty much covered what I had hoped to do for job postings for today. Is there anything else that needs to be covered? Under postings?
I only, we can focus.
So Joe, anything else on postings, or are you good?
No, we're good. I'm good. You've covered it.
So anything else on financial or policy, I'll report out on the DOR tomorrow in our meeting. I think I added that to the agenda. So any policy-wise? I, I think the only thing that I would say, cool conservation. Is that for whatever reason, the Conservation Commission Chair has set up so that the her email forwards to the selectmen. So I, I think that we need to make a change to that, so that that is no longer happening. So we may need to
I, I was gonna take care of that under like
Okay, all right, so we'll discuss that under communications now, okay? I have nothing further. Any reports from board liaisons?
No, I just have, just a little update with, you know, I've been in contact with the fire chief and police chief, and everything's going well. We have our weekly meetings, as we all set up a while ago, with the fire department, but it sounds like things are going just fine.
Excellent.
I have, we have a couple of things coming up that we'll be tackling this month with the rec department. I've been working very closely with the library. Library had their book sale on Saturday, and I, when I got there, it was really nice to see the townspeople out. They, they were very, very busy. I was really happy to see that. They've been very active throughout all of the situations that we've been dealing with with COVID, and, you know, I, I, I just can't tell you enough how wonderful that staff is down there to be able to stay open, follow procedures, get things going, but still keep, you know, servicing not only the students but other people in town in regards to all of the, the issues that they've, they've been dealing with. But I want to thank the library personally, because it was nice to see, and the townspeople to be out, out and about on a Saturday with or without masks, it was nice to see. I also stopped on Saturday to the, at the Old Harvard Church. There was a quilt exhibition slash sale there. It was really nice to see. That also was well-attended. I think people went from one to the other, which I thought was really very well done. And we need to start doing more of those. We, as a community, need to start getting together and doing more of these things. This is what Townsend's all about. This is part of the reason why I ran for selectmen, is that these are, are ways in which we can show other communities that we are a united front, and you know, we are gonna be continuing with our, our community effort to get these things out there. And lastly, on Saturday, I joined Chair Cal, her and I went to the Nishoba Valley Technical High School graduation. And I want to personally thank the administration and staff at Nishoba Tech for the warm welcome and wonderful reception we, we received. I also want to personally thank Dr. Denise Pigeon for her hospitality, and I especially want to thank the culinary students. They had a wonderful refreshment for, for us beforehand. I thought that was really nice. So in the graduation, there was a hundred and sixty-eight graduates, with sixteen of these graduates from Townsend. I especially want to make everyone aware, the valedictorian of Nishoba Valley Technical High School does come from Townsend. His name is Kyle DeJardan. He gave a great address to the graduating class of twenty-twenty-one, and I want to mention several other honors that he did have. He received a certificate of academic excellence. He had, and he is inducted for an outstanding senior athlete slash scholar award. He's got an award for robotics and animation, and he got a scholarship from the Townsend Lions, Lions Club. His address to the class was not only informative, heartfelt, but it was quite humorous as well. It was, it was really nice to, to see the class being a unified front that, you know, with, with all that went on with COVID in there, you know, the, the remote learning, but it was nice to see them all together. So I want to make sure that we recognize this outstanding young man as we look to the future, and congratulations to all the graduates from both North Middlesex and from the Shobit Act.
And I'll add my congratulations to that as well. So Joe, you were able to be at the North Middlesex graduation, correct?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. I apologize if you're forgetting that. I went to the North Middlesex graduation. It was well-done, very professionally put together, the students, they, their speeches, their, the class. I thought everything was well-organized. They really kept extra precautions still for the COVID. It was really strange and different to see it was handled, but it was done very nice.
I'm looking forward to the next school year.
Yes.
And enjoy the summer, everyone. All right, so that's board liaisons, announcements, communications, et cetera. Let me see if I have anything in the share. Go ahead if you have something.
I don't.
I have just a couple of Guardian questions. In reference to what Madam Chair had talked about in regards to the conservation, the Conservation Department or Conservation Commission put on a, a way message on their email. So that when somebody emails that, it says that they need to send their request to the selectmen at TownsendMass.gov email box. So this is an individual as opposed to a system type thing. It's not, the mail is not automatically going, so we would probably need to contact whoever's in charge of the conservation to make sure they take that away message off of that. All right. Okay. Guardian process going forward remains the same. I just wanted to, to put it out. I had a couple of questions from some of my boards that I'm liaison for, boards and departments. The way Guardian has been set up is that if you have a trouble ticket or you have an issue, go ahead and send a trouble ticket to Guardian, just like you did before. Everything else that, that's gonna be happening is really kind of behind the scenes. This is for us to be able to monitor the, what gets taken care of, and it's really more of a budgetary thing than anything else. Because we're reaching the end of the fiscal year, we have to be fiscally responsible to make sure that, you know, we're not spending too, too much money. So behind the scenes, I'm, I'll be fielding the questions from the help desk in regards to what should be done, what can be done. And maybe at that time where I may be reaching out to somebody in the department. Guardian is telling me, so just be aware that that may happen as well. All the emails with selectmen email box that I just talked about is going through to all three of us at, at this point. What I thought, if we could discuss how you, you know, we shouldn't be answering those emails unless it's one of our liaison departments. That's my thought. So I think we just need to be clear with the three of us, because we can't talk because of open meeting law, so all three of us are gonna be getting the same emails. So my thought was that the only emails that should be addressed would be the ones for the departments that you're liaison for. Okay, would you choose, Joe?
Yeah, I'm fine. I may have made that mistake. I sent one coming today from Beth. I just gave her my suggestion to reach out to the union people, but that's even easier, so I'll just deal with public safety, and you guys deal with yours, and it'll be fine. It'll be perfect.
So do we need a motion on that?
Why don't we do that?
All right.
I move that any emails coming into the selectmen at TownsendMass.gov on be handled by the liaison for the appropriate department.
Second.
All those in favor? Well, any further discussion? Roberts rules. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Your shank, yes.
That's next to the ring, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yeah.
And the last one I wanted to talk about was with any additions or deletions of email accounts. Per our last meeting, you said that you wanted me to take care of it. I just wanted to know is that might need to check with the entire board if we were making, if I was making any changes?
Yeah, probably.
Okay. And I, I'm trying to arrange talking with Brad. There are gonna be some suggestions that he had given me that I want to bring up to the board as well. That to me, I think are, are safety issues and redundancy issues that need to be implemented as soon as we can, and once I get that information, I'd like to bring it to you.
Okay, so we have security for files, et cetera, on tomorrow night. As an executive session.
So I would like to bring it up then.
Okay, with you, Joe?
July ninth or July eighth?
June
June eighth.
Yeah, it's on as an executive session. I updated the
I see that.
Based on our Friday meeting, I updated tomorrow night's agenda. The executive session for security of buildings and files, and et cetera, IT.
And I'd like to be able to discuss that then.
So who's going to be in that meeting? Who's reaching out?
All of us.
The three of us?
The three of us. And I believe we also invited Chief Sartal
Yes.
to join us tomorrow night.
Would it be wise then, if we're gonna be talking about it, have Brad involved with us?
If he is available. I haven't, I was hoping to talk with him before our meeting today, but I, he didn't get back to me.
So I, I don't know that we need him, other than if, if Chad can consult with him.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah, it's, it's really more of, yeah, it's some of the things that we may be able to implement immediately, most of the things that I want to talk about are things that will probably happen now, yet in our next, as we, yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Anything else? I have one thing on communication. Tomorrow, there would normally have been a department head meeting. If it's okay with both of you, I'd like to go ahead and do that. I'll publish an agenda. It would be at eleven AM tomorrow. And it would be to discuss the Guardian help desk, how that that is still available to all employees, because that apparently came up. Town Council used to review that policy with them, and to let them all know that the last Tuesday of the month, Town Council is available. Those are his open office hours. And then also, it was suggested, and I know I'm not supposed to report you tomorrow, but it was suggested that we meet with department heads to have them review their budgets, and to make sure that the report is accurate for the end of May. What else is coming forward from them? That we should consider doing a freeze-on spending, but to first find out where they are with everything. So just for the rest of the month, the end of the, this year. So this fiscal year, twenty-twenty-one, the rest of the month, so
We need a motion for
Madam Chair. All right, so that's, that's good to do that department head. I think we may have had some discussion as far as maybe giving them, are you gonna let the same department head so that they can go back to other employees and and give them an update exactly what's going on, so there's no questions as to which way we're moving forward?
Yes. And the, and the other thing is, I, I want to review and I, just to talk to them about the finalizing of salary numbers. I know we have that. And the retroactive payments that were approved at town meeting. So we have to get those numbers to Jared so that he has. So I'll be bringing those forward at a meeting later this week, probably Friday. That's my total.
The final numbers?
Final number, yeah.
So I, I move that the Chair Veronica Cal to meet with the department heads at eleven AM tomorrow to discuss the outstanding issues and what the board is looking for moving forward.
Second.
I, I should also say that I, I also want to ask them for any questions they have, anything that we haven't addressed yet, or have haven't sought to address, that we could work with them on up until the point where we get an interim TA. Work with them on up until the point where we get an interim TA and. I'm hoping will be within the next two weeks.
Ended.
Second.
All right, so um all those in favor for the amendment to the motion?
Joe Shank, yes.
That's Exxenderanian, yes.
Veronica, yes, and vote on the motion as a whole.
Joe Shank, yes.
That's Exxenderanian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, thank you um very much, I don't think I have anything else. Joe, do you have any?
MRPC contract status report.
Um I think that was more informational than anything else, let me put this. Contracts status report, this was um. MRPC, which is our regional planning commission that we belong to and we use. This is just a listing of all their current contracts, it's not only for Townsend, and Townsend is in here for the DLTA. Grants, et cetera, that we um are are contracted with MRPC for. Um but it lists all, I thought it was interesting, the UPWP for the walkability study that's currently being done in Townsend. So I put this in here just so that um. Both of you could review and just see what's what what the possibilities are, what other towns use MRPC for. Um you know, La Minster, um. Um. You know, Fitchburg, Lunenburg, what Westminster, what are all things that MRPC can be used for? So that was mostly why I have that in there, they they sent this out informationally and I put it in. Uh master plan mapping, that's a Townsend um project, the UPWP. Project for the walkability study in Sterling and Townsend is ongoing. Uh a regional pedestrian plan. That is ongoing. So anyway, that's the only reason that was there, so look through it if there's any that you wanna talk about, but more for ideas for what the town could use MRPC for in the future. And I think at this point, I'm gonna put in a plug for the uh disability committee, let me see if I have that, because it would be good to have an ADA plan. In place, the Commission on Disability, we'll talk about this on June fourteen, but I'll put a plug in on there, and I had asked um. Senior Senator to put that in their um. Uh latest newsletter, so I have a look to make sure that it got in, if not, it'll be in the next time. So I was a little late getting that to Katie, but anyway.
That happens when you're on vacation in Hawaii.
Yes, it does. All right, so that is all that I have. Um. For today, and let's see, or do you have anything else?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Excellent, all right, so um. All those in favor of adjourning at twelve fifty-five PM?
Joe Shank, yes.
That's Exxenderanian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. Evening at six PM.
See you tomorrow night, see ya.
Thank you, everyone.